Into order. First on our agenda is our point of pride awards. I'll pass it off to Dr. Cossey.
Good evening, board members. I welcome Chief Operations Officer, Mr. Anthony Johnson, to the podium.
Yes, sir. Thank you. So this evening, we have several points of pride that were rescheduled from February when we had a little bit of snow. And so we appreciate everyone being able to be here this evening. I do have about five pages worth of names. So I want to apologize in advance. If I do mess up any names, I do apologize, but I'm going to try to do my best. If first, I could have the Clarksville High School JROTC Cyber Patriot Team and their representatives to please come forward. This team, composed of Cadet Talon Talbert, Micah Tate, Cade McCombs, Chris Fechner, Jace Karpowski, under the leadership of First Sergeant Landy Whiteside, participated in the Air and Space Forces Cyber Patriot State Round Competition. And here in front of us today, we have the first place winners in the All Service Silver Tier Division. Congratulations. And Ms. Hedrick, don't go far because we have some more Wildcats to recognize. If the Clarksville High School Wildcats Cheer Team could please come forward. Now, you might remember from last year that they came to us being the bronze medalist at the state, at a national competition. Tonight, they're here with us as the silver medal winners in the D1 Small Varsity Game Day Division with zero or with three zero deduction routines at the National High School Cheerleading Competition. The members of this team include Julie Alfred, Chloe Blevins, Madeline Bruner, Blair Butcher, McKenna Carbin, Kinsley Savage, Graham Bryant, Peyton Hay, Kennedy Lang, Ella Roberts, Laney Rogers, Mailey Carbon, Kylie Cleray, Shalia Griffey, Aubrey Hardy, Anne Kate Shay, Jayden Barlow, Taylor Clenard, Hannah Thurman, Ava Munch, Annie Spinella, and coaches Kim Thurman, Caitlin Kinslow, and Katie Shelby. Congratulations on your win. All right. Next, we're going to recognize several of our JROTC teams that competed in the North Bullet High School Annual Drill Meet, also known as the Jesse Shot Invitational. This evening, the JROCC instructors asked if they could have representatives from each team because if not, we'd have about 100 cadets here with us tonight. So I'll ask for the representatives first from the West Creek High School JROTC Drill Team to please come forward. And although just a few representatives are here tonight, this team is composed of Cadets Aguilera, Argueda, Arnett, Baggett, Barzola, Buckner Harris, Carlisle, Claiborne, Green, Dixon, Holt, Serenity Johnson, Malaysia Johnson, Jones, Lopez, McQueen, Mejia Barajona, Ned Nieves, Organizov, Pearson, Shade Spears, Tavares, Beer, Donigan, Fletcher, Haggard, Harding, Jackson, Lacy, Richter, Ortiz, Rock, and Ruiz. And this team right here was the first place overall in regulation drill categories, which includes first place overall let one champion, let one squad category first place, first place let one color guard category, first place unarmed color guard category, first place unarmed platoon category, first place armed squad category, first place armed color guard category, and first place armed platoon category. In summary, first place in everything. Congratulations. And of course, the CMCSJROTC teams, JROTC teams had a show out. So if next, if I could have Montgomery Central High School representatives to please come forward. So we had first with West Creek, and now this is the second place team. And this includes Cadets Black, Bodem, Cochran, Dobson, Epps, Gray, Houseman, Heath, Jones, Nutson, Lopez, Lester, Nialis, Reese, Robinson, Schenberger, Kamara Smith, Myla Smith, Worrell, York, Martinez, Ashford, and Kerr. And of course, they won second place overall in regulation drill categories with a second place overall let one, fourth place let one squad category, second place let one color guard category, second place unarmed color guard category, second place unarmed platoon category, second place armed squad category, fourth place armed color guard, and second place armed platoon category. Congratulations. And next, if we could have the Kenwood High School JROTC Team to please come forward. This team, composed of members Krantz, Allen, Cadets Krantz, Allen, Houlihan, Walsh, Ulu King, Roberts, Guadardo, Soto, Lee, Radcliffe, Robling, Wren, Jones, Bracy, Val Carcel, Bird Long, Mosley, Suita, Montemeor, Matavo, Ramos, Olenier, Gutierrez, Montemeor, Lopez, Cable, Cook, Patel, Twitty, and Hunter, and their coach, First Sergeant Derek Austin, won third place overall in regulation drill categories, including third place overall let one, second place let one squad category, sixth place let one color guard category, third place unarmed color guard category, fourth place unarmed platoon category, fifth place armed squad category, second place armed color guard, and fifth place armed platoon category, oh, and more, second place exhibition category, third place solo exhibition category, first place unarmed exhibition category, and second place armed exhibition category. Congratulations. All right. And last but not least, from this competition, if I could have Kirkwood High School representatives, please come forward. And we want to give a special shout out to Kirkwood. They won, even though they are not yet even an established JROTC program, since they are only in their second year of existence. But they won third place in the let one color guard category among those established JROTC programs from multiple states. This includes Cadets Pruitt, Naya Hernandez Henley, Nora Hernandez Henley, and Van Kirk, and their coach, Master Sergeant Clarence Johnson. Congratulations, Kirkwood. All right. Moving over to the Tennessee All-State Musicians. We have all-state musicians from several schools. If I could first have the Montgomery Central High School Representatives to please come forward. From Montgomery Central High School, we have Freya Joswiak, who earned a place in the All-State TTBB Choir, and Bastian Rothering at the All-State TTBB Choir. And they're joined by their teacher Angela Rouse. And congratulations to you. Congratulations. Next, if we could have the Rossview High School All-State Musicians and their representatives, please come forward. From Rossview High School, we have Jalen Soto, who earned a place in the All-State TTBB Choir, and Ju Hayanwu, who won a spot in the All-State Orchestra. Congratulations. And West Creek High School. From West Creek High School, Skylah Wears Bicky was named to the All-State SSAA Choir. Okay. If the Kenwood High School Unified Bowling Team and their representatives and coaches could please come forward. I am proud to announce that Kenwood High School is our first ever CMCSSS state champion in unified bowling. Members of the team include Jerome Asbury, Elijah Ferrier, Sebastian Kelly, Carlos Ransom, Deshaun McFerrin, and Matthew Walls. And then their coaches that are here with us today. In addition to coaching the state champions, they also won the state coaches of the year, Coach Kelly Pich Tatro and Melissa Suss. Congratulations. That concludes this evening's Points of Pride, and we'll have more for you at the next meeting.
We'll give y'all a moment to exit, so that way we can go ahead and continue on. All righty. Item two, surplus property, child nutrition. Dr. Cossey.
Board members, you will notice in your packet a list of surplus items from our child nutrition director. You will see quite a few of those wishing to be surplus and salvaged.
Anybody have any comments? Okay. All right. Moving on. Item three, surplus property. Montgomery Central High School Football Jerseys and Helmets, first read.
Board members, you will also notice in your packet a letter from Montgomery Central High School regarding old football jerseys and helmets, wishing to surplus those so that they can sell those for a LiftOn fundraiser to support their team. They're no longer usable.
Okay. Anybody comments on that? Okay. Item four, textbook adoption certification, first read. Dr. Cossey.
Board members, it is science textbook adoption time, and I'm going to turn the mic over to Dr. Shanda Doughty, Chief Academic Officer, to give you more information about that.
So in your package, you'll find the recommendations from the CMCSSS textbook committees for each grade level or subject specific for high school. It's important to note that all of these books were vetted at the state level prior to being put in front of our teachers for review. They were reviewed by teachers, administrators, parents, and community members. This year, we received over 1,200 pieces of feedback, which is very exciting. Tennessee has not adopted science textbooks since 2017-18. So as you can imagine, that we are very excited upon your approval to proceed with purchasing these, training our teachers, and being ready for our kids to learn from these materials starting next year.
Are these physical books, or are they going to be on the computer?
It will depend on what the teacher committee's recommended. However, our recommendation is always physical books, yes.
Anybody else?
The books that you had to review, was it just like one specific selection? Or did you have multiple books that you actually look at and choose from?
We had multiple books, yes, sir, for every subject except some of the high school subjects. When you get to the high school subjects and it's like AP Biology, just for purpose of example, sometimes there is just one textbook company that wants to print those because that's very extensive content. But for the elementary and middle school and the entry-level subjects in high school, like physical science and biology, there were multiple textbooks for us to review.
Thank you. Anybody else? All right. Item five, budget amendments, first read.
Board members, I will turn the mic over to Chief Financial Officer up at the podium, Mr. Jeff Taylor, to discuss with you the FY25 March Budget Amendments for first reading.
Good evening, board. How is everyone doing this evening? Several budget amendments for tonight, starting with the general purpose fund. We're adding an additional revenues of $6.1 million. Most of that is from the outcomes-based TESA funding, which was $2,979,000, and higher-than-anticipated sales tax revenues. We're adding an additional $3 million to that as well. That takes up the lion's share of the revenues. Expenses, as you see on that sheet there, the total amount is $2,63,872. And there you see the $3 million in additional projected sales tax revenue. We'll continue to watch it. We might have an additional adjustment at the last budget amendment we do in May. It still looks pretty good, but we'll just continue to watch that. On the next page, like I said, you see the TESA outcomes-based revenue of $2,979,000. Reimbursement adjustment under the Special Education Grants to the State for $110,000. Air Grant reimbursement for substitute teacher expenses of $9,300, and then $3,000 under other government groups and citizen groups for Career Connection 6 program that's in relation to TCAT. Moving on to the expenditures, a lot of these are just adjustments to the payroll and expenditures budgets, just making sure that we keep those under budget for the remainder of the fiscal year. On the first page, under Regular Instruction, an adjustment of $149,058 for salaries and $169,586. Majority of that is for, under the benefit side, is for medical insurance. We're starting to have more people go with our family plans, which means we end up having to increase that budgeted amount. Then additional $30,000 for summer learning supplies and materials for the elementary schools. Then adjustments for payroll projections under Alternative School and Special Education, as well as increases for the high-cost reimbursement reconciliation under Special Ed, as well as the state's bed pre-K entitlement grant, increases in supplies and materials and equipment. Moving on to vocational education, this is mostly and has to do with the Innovative School Model Grant, just to align it with what we have in E-Plan. And you'll see under one of the other functions, where it's where the majority of this money is getting moved under salary benefits, contracted services, supplies and materials, and equipment. Under Student Services, another adjustment for payroll projections, as well as moving $10,000 out and putting it elsewhere for doing a renovation over at the Greenwood Complex, adding two additional classrooms over there. Under Health Services, additional payroll projections, and then, of course, purchasing, adding money for the St. B Early Learning Center for nursing supplies, as well as for another $1,000 for district nurses. Under Other Student Support, you'll see just some more money we're adjusting for Innovative School Model Grant to align with E-Plan, as well as just increasing the salary and benefits line, other student support for payroll projections. Then as far as moving funds to pay for professional learning, language line translation, additional funds for the Greenwood renovation, which I think totaled $24,000 when it's all said and done. Then the grant for the Career and Connection 6 TCAT grant, and then additional funding for supplies and materials. Moving on down, Staff Development. That was one where I think I actually made a typographical error on that, but that was, I take it back, that one's fine. It's more for the Innovative School Models Grant, where we moved $271,000 out on that. Under Other Regular Instruction Support, we had to add money to salaries and benefits to, in order to, this is my train of thought here, pay for these teachers' residents. We have to hire subs so that they can get days of training. It's an additional cost for subs in that timeframe while they're training. And under payroll projections, we had to add an additional $101,000 there. And changing some of these positions from EA Spanish to Admin Assistant Spanish Interpretation, added a few days, if memory serves me correct, in those positions, which added an additional $19,836. And then, as you go down, you see the rest of those. Under Special Ed, just once again, for sped pre-K entitlement grant, just an adjustment to that grant for salary and benefits, as well as just increase for payroll projections. And then just the impact aid for the, from the DOD sped funds and the PCG grant contract for $50,000 under contracted services. Most of that was moved out of the staff development or the supplies and materials line just below that. Under Vocational Educational Sport, this is where all that money that was moved out earlier from the other functions went to, under Vocational Educational Sport for the Innovative School Model Grant, under Employee Benefits, Contracted Services, and Staff Development. I mean, excuse me, Equipment. And then under Technology, just increasing, again, for benefits, mainly medical. And then lastly, under Board of Education, an additional $270,561 for increase in insurance and liability costs. Then this page, just like I said, smaller increases. The one that says correction, under Office of the Principal Correction to Previous Month's Amendments, we actually did, if y'all recall, in the previous two amendments, we would remove funds from those allocation accounts for St. B and Burt accident. And we did that twice, so we're just adding those funds back to zero that back out. Under Human Resources, adding $21,500. Part of that is $20,000 to aid in paying for a compensation study and just an increase in their scanner lease. And then under Operation of Plant, the largest one there is the $410,000. As Norm can allude to, their garbage truck, their main one, has reached the end of its life and it's to the point of failure, so we're adding $400,000 there for that, as well as $5,000 for increases for their box truck that they were purchasing. And once again, that correction to the previous amendment regarding St. B. Under Maintenance of Plant, you'll see two classroom additions for $24,000 for the Greenwood Complex, and then additional funds for the uniform contract lease that we were trying to finish out. And of course, the increase based on salary and projections under Early Childhood Education. Moving on to Child Nutrition, have additional $10,446 in vendor rebates and an additional increase, a cost in the contracted services for school nutrition association dues of $90,300 just for the cost of maintenance to their vehicles. And then another $8,523 for increased cost for staff development due to the increased staff that they have. And then lastly, under Transportation, high-cost reimbursement here, the $150,869 from the federal high-cost reimbursement grant. And then increase for the employee benefits, almost exclusively medical insurance, for $163,907. Any questions?
Mr. Garland.
Yeah, under this new tariff that's just been put out today, do you, on the nutrition, do you expect an increase in those prices?
I'm hoping we can make it through the rest of this school year without having to worry about that, but that is a potential issue for next fiscal year.
Okay, thank you.
Ms. Bryant.
Sorry, I got a quick question. Might not be super quick. You know, I'm brand new to this still and trying to figure it out. These adjustments are, is it an increase based on what was originally budgeted? Or is it just they're being adjusted as you're spending money, as we're spending money?
Well, for like the truck, that's something that was unexpected, so that's an additional $400,000 we've had to add. The medical insurance is one. We budget it as best we can, but if employees decide to take the family plan, and that's been a lot of the situations.
Because that re-dozen at the end of the year, right? That renews at the end of the year. They change their packages in January.
Correct. I think, I think open enrollment is in August, so it starts the new year in September. So that's one of the bigger expenditures we had this year. And then, like I said, a lot of that was too, was with the Innovative School Model Grant. We're moving funds around to align it with what we have in E-Plan.
Gotcha. Okay. Thank you. Just learning.
Okay, moving on. Item six, live streaming, board meetings, first read.
Board members, there was a board member that had asked us to bring this on the agenda. You've been given some of the cost of that, of the subscription cost in any way to move forward with that. Mr. Johnson has done the legwork for that, and I'm sure can answer any questions that you might have, or Mr. Nolan as well. So I will open it up to any questions you might have, based on the information you already have.
Mr. or Mr. Garland.
My only concern is that if we implement this, we need to wait until the next budget year in order to make it a reality. I have no problem with streaming the way it's been done now. Because what I say, I'm going to say regardless of whether the cameras are rolling or they have to do it at a later date. So the bottom line, I support whatever the board actually come up with, but I asked the board personally to consider waiting until the next board year, I mean, next budget year, so we can get the cost in the budget. Where I understand, it costs $300 a night in order to actually put this on. And that's $3,600 that we're going to have to find if we don't wait that long. Thank you.
Mr. Mabry.
Mr. Johnson. So I appreciate the email and following up with this. The cost, was it $50,000 a year that I saw? No, okay. Can you tell me the cost? I mean, there we go. No, no, the $50,000. So when this was first presented, Mr. Baggett had presented this idea back in 2022, and we did some research. And so that was for the hardware, basically the technology that they already have. So that was already purchased back in 2022, and they did purchase the equipment so that it could be ready if, in the future, the board ever decided for it to livestream. The recurring cost is for accessibility for the cart services. So in summary, right now, Zach Woodaker, who's our videographer, he takes the video file that they send him the next day, he captions it, and then we put it on YouTube. With live services, it takes someone who's certified in being able to do that live captioning through a cart service. So we would look at something very similar to what the county uses. Actually, I have to give a lot of credit to Skip at the county, who really helped us several years ago in formulating this. And so using a service that would live caption it. Now, I want to be really transparent. You know, that was probably on the higher end 300. We're probably closer, maybe to about 150 or so, just depending on how long the meetings are. But we don't know exact prices till we go out and kind of shop for those quotes. I was using ballpark figures based upon what the county was paying, what Skip had shared with me. But that's the only recurring cost. I mean, I want to say probably in a few years, we might need to update the technology as technology changes and whatnot. But as far as recurring costs, it's simply for that cart service. And just to break down what cart is, it's essentially, in an easy way, you've got our livestream with a slight delay being sent to someone who's a certified cart. They're listening in, they're like a court reporter, they use a stentograph machine, very quickly, at about 250 words per minute is what they need to be able to do. Typing it out, it sends it back into our stream, aligns it with the YouTube video, and boom, the live captions are there. So that's basically what it is. I appreciate that. Give a shout out to Mr. Baggett for thinking about that back then. So about $3,600 a year is what we're talking about at the most, if it's $300 a month. I do, I'm going to say, I'm going to kind of give a range. If meetings are about an hour, I'm thinking conservatively, probably around $150 or so for that service. And then times two, so that 300, so yep, $3,600. But I want to say the range could be anywhere up to like 7,200, just depends. Like I said, this was based on figures that we got nearly three years ago now. And I know with everything else, I don't know if costs have gone up. And we would do, what I would recommend we would do is use a remote cart service, so they don't have to be in the room with us. Like I said, it's that whole thing where they're sending it out. And so each company that does this type of service, you know, has their own rates. We obviously would look for the highest quality, but also the lowest rate. And would the goal be to like stream on YouTube, Facebook, a separate like website? Definitely YouTube. I don't want to get in on the record or anything about different social media companies and whatnot. I'll just say YouTube is, has more robust features that allows for us to livestream a little bit better. That's what most are using. County uses YouTube, that sort of thing. So YouTube is the platform we're currently using, and correct me if I'm wrong, it's, we're not paying anything at all for that YouTube service. It's completely free for us, I don't believe. So it's free, that service. We're really, you know, the only piece would be that cart service.
I appreciate it. I, that's, that's, I misunderstood the email. Again, I appreciate Mr. Baggett for being forward, thinking with that, getting the technology in place for this. The reason I brought this up is some of that, you know, a year and a half ago when we, or maybe two years ago when we originally put this in place, there was maybe was some concern about putting it in place, not necessarily livestreaming immediately, but let there be a delay. I feel like in this last year or two that we've been doing this, I think everything's gone well. And if, correct me if I'm wrong, I believe every other local elected official bodies here do stream live.
I, I know one hundred percent the county does. They've been doing it the longest, and they've done a great job. I know the city, when we visited with them about in twenty twenty-two, they were doing it. I still think, I believe, I, I see their meetings that are live. So I can speak to those two governing bodies, certainly that they do, they do livestream, yes.
Yeah. And, and the city does. I've, I've watched the county council meetings, and other schools across the entire state do. I've tuned in live to many of them. And so that's the reason I brought it back up. When I requested it at the last meeting, when I did request it, I let the chair and Mr. Nolan know at the beginning of the meeting I was going to bring that up. It had nothing to do with anything that happened at the meeting. I let them know beforehand that I was going to bring it up. So just something that's been on my mind, that I feel like we're, we're elected body. It'd be great for people to be able to tune in the day of while it's happening, and that's the reason I brought it up. And we can continue conversation for anybody, but I would love for this to be put on the agenda to, to vote on, to, to adopt in the next meeting. Thank you.
Ms. Bryant?
Just a couple of quick questions. First, I want to say, as a parent, that was before I came onto the school board, I would have found this very helpful. That was one thing that I was really hoping the school would implement, because by the next day, it was like you already read the articles and the paper and all the things. So I think that this would be a really great feature for parents. The, a couple of questions. Monitoring comments, do we have a plan for monitoring comments as they come in? Because I know sometimes that can get a little out of control.
Yes, so that's something we, we would, we would definitely work through. You can just disable comments, but I do want to be honest, once you do enable comments, people have freedom of speech, so they can say whatever they want to say about you. And as long as it doesn't, you know, the, the typical rules of decorum, they, they will be there. But I do believe, and I'll do, I'll do some more research, you know, obviously if this, if the board moves forward this. But I do believe many are probably disabling comments, because it would be hard to monitor in real time those, those sorts of things, if there was something that was egregious. Other than that, though, just like our Facebook page, people are allowed to state their opinions.
It wasn't mostly the opinions. It was, I was thinking more of the long, the lines of people asking questions as we're going through.
Oh, yeah.
Yeah.
Great, yeah.
Yeah. The other question is, do we believe that this will increase participation? Do we have any studies? Or did the city or the county see a big difference when they livestreamed?
I, I don't want to speculate, and I don't know that anybody relayed that to me necessarily. I will say it really ranges on what's on the agenda as far as our viewership. So we can have several hundred, or we could have fifty. It just, you know, it just depends. You know, one thing, and, and I kind of wanted to dispel this misconception, I did, you know, several years ago when I, when I talked to you all, is that just because it's livestream, it will still be there for people to watch whenever it's convenient. So I know that the question had come up at that time, that if we livestream it, would they still be able to watch it later? Because sometimes, you know, people are still working at six, it's not convenient for them. But yes, so basically, once the live ends, then it takes a little bit of time to do what it's got to do on, on the YouTube servers, but then it's there, just like our videos are now.
Awesome. Last question. It sounds like the only downside really is the cost. Are we, is there anything that I'm missing here as far as consideration in this, as far as downsides?
I, I just want to mention just a few things that can happen, but they shouldn't, I don't think they should be taken as downsides. Obviously, to livestream, you have to have connectivity. We've got great service providers in Clarksville, we have a great technology department, but there is a situation, and I know I've seen it myself when I follow their school systems, sorry, the livestream's not working tonight, but we'll, you know, film and record later. That, that's going to sometimes possibly happen. We're going to hope we always have great connectivity, but it does take a lot of broadband to, to get that pushed through. So if those happen, I think we just need to realize and be okay with the fact that in, in those situations, we would just have to, they're going to still capture on the hard drive, we would still post it later. So that's, that's really one of the, the main things. And then there can be, I have seen this before, there can be people get a little bit more nervous to speak because they know they're live. You know, it's really no different, because we're all going to be seen tomorrow. But when you're in that moment, I know sometimes that causes some angst for people, but we'll just have to help them through.
Yes.
Yes, yes.
I didn't mean to interrupt. Thank you very much.
All right, Ms. Mabry?
I just want to say CDE Lightbin's an incredible partner of education. I'm sure they're going to keep us up to speed.
Yes.
I just want to go to record saying that I would also believe we should disable comments, because the person that they are commenting, well, then they're not speaking for any of us, you know. So that would probably make sense that comments be disabled, but I'm sure we're going to write policy around that of how we do things that, that we can approve. And honestly, the costs here are very minimal, especially you're saying it's the cost of the county commissioner it does, and other elected bodies do as well. So I think, I think it's great. I think you guys did an incredible job. Give a shout out to our team back here. You guys did an incredible job. And I actually spoke to them before I even brought this up as well, making sure they were in the, in the loop. And for those watching online and pointing to the amazing, I don't know what the department's IT team back there, that, that pair of things together. So I didn't want to spring this on anybody. I put, did some time before I brought this forward. But I, I believe the costs are minimal. This is something all the other, other elected bodies do, and we should do it as well. Thank you.
And if I might, I just want to add one other thing, just to kind of piggyback off of what Mr. Garland said. I do want to say, you know, when the, if the board makes a choice to move forward in this direction, I will ask if you give us a little bit of time to technology, although the, you know, the hardware's there, they have not tested this. Will also take us a little bit of time to find that cart service, enter into that agreement. And then I do believe, and correct me if I'm wrong, because, you know, unless you chose to say it starts July first, I do believe we would have to request budget amendments if this is something we were to do now. So either way, whatever the timing is, I do just ask for that favor, just like you all did when we recorded forward, that we have a little bit of time before we flip that switch, so we can make sure that it's done properly.
Mr. Garland?
Just have one additional question. Is there a market, marketing plan to get this information out to the homes, the families that are actually going to be receiving this information over the airline?
Yes, sir. Just like when we started with, with the recording, you know, making sure people knew that those meetings would be recorded. So, you know, one place we advertise, you know, board meetings is, is in the district calendar that gets printed for everybody. We'd always put all the dates, because we know that those can change. But we do tell people that they're typically, you know, every other Tuesday, the first and third, and then to check the website. One, if it's, if it's livestream, we'll definitely make sure that people know where to access that, those links. Zach's already done a great job of curating all the content on our existing CMCS's focus, which we already market heavily on everything, one of our, our three major social media. And so we'll, I'll look to his expertise on ways to make it more prominent on that page, so they can know, kind of like the county says, it will say, you know, meeting tonight at six, and it will pop up, so you know that that's going to be there, ready to go. So we'll definitely work through some things, and I'll, I'll tap into the, the expertise of my team.
I do agree with the disabling the comments. If, you know, for those at home that want to come speak to the board, they need to put a notice out to come speak to us. So it would, it would also deter seeing comments from people actually paying attention to what's going on in the board meeting. So I agree with that. All righty. Moving on, item seven, proposed modifications to EL five and EL six, first read.
Board members, you will find your packet. Amendment, or changes to EL five and EL six, it really comes down to the law changed and allows us to change the, the limit for formal bids from twenty-five thousand to fifty thousand. So it's just, it's equal in what the law says now. And if you have any questions about that, Mr. Nolan has volunteered to enter this.
It is two, it is exactly what he said. EL five, executive limitation, isn't a limitation on the director. Currently, it reads that the director cannot commit a single non-budgetary purchase or expenditure greater than twenty-five thousand dollars. And in EL six, it just says that they cannot commit over twenty-five thousand dollars without going through a formal bid process. So periodically, when the law changes, we've done this before, we've kind of cleaned up. And so when the legislature changes our statutes, we try to comply with it. So the recommendation would be just increase the authority from twenty-five to fifty thousand dollars on both of those ELs, just modify them. Are there any other questions?
Your recommendation's based on the state maximum, correct?
Yes.
Okay.
The state maximum over the years has changed from ten thousand.
The state minimum, I'm sorry.
It's, it's actually the state maximum.
Okay.
We, the state allows non-competitive bids currently up to twenty-five thousand dollars. Now it's fifty thousand dollars. We couldn't say as a board, well, we're going to authorize our director to do anything up to two hundred and fifty thousand dollars because the state law doesn't allow it. So it is raising it up to the limit that the state allows.
Thank you.
Okay. I had to make county commissioners' comments. All right. Thank you all. Other business?
Can I? First of all, I would like to say personally, thank you to all the chiefs who did present tonight. And, and I can say that they're a fabulous group to work with. However, good, good evening, board members. On behalf of Dr. Luna Vedder, I would like to say that as we approach spring break, all of our students, teachers, staff, and district level support have been working tirelessly over the last twenty-six, almost twenty-seven weeks or so, doing what is right for all students in CMCSS. I wish everyone a relaxing break as we gear up for assessment season, where we get to show what we know, as the saying goes, and I hope everyone is safe headed home.
All right. A little bragging. If y'all didn't pay attention to all the news articles that have been out in the last week or so, I feel like I've lost a lot of sleep since then. But the Quanis Club of Clarksville has been doing this for forty years, and it used to be the reading is fundamental program where we gave, we, we went around and we would give, I'm also a member of the Quanis Club of Clarksville for twenty-plus years, and currently serving the board. We used to give an option for kids to pick their book, and we would go visit the schools and everything like that. And then with our partnership with the Education Foundation, we changed that a few years ago. It seems like just a couple, but I guess it's been longer than that. And we had, this year, we had Chris Grabenstein come. He's done our book for quite a few years. And so we gave, in the F and M Bank Arena, we had every third grader in the school system come, and we gave them an escape from Mr. Lemoncello's library. So thirty-two hundred students came in and got their book. You know, we all incurred expenses from that, and the Quanis Club was happy to pick some of that up. And, you know, we're just proud to, I have two signed copies, if y'all would like them. Come see me afterwards if you have another student or something that didn't get it. But as your third grader moves through the system, every third grader will be affected by this program. And that is our goal as the Quanians, is that every child is, that is in our system, that's ever been a third grader, will have an impact from the Quanis Club of Clarksville. So I just wanted to do a little bragging. That's a thing that's near and dear to our hearts. Anybody have anything else? Oh, Mr. Mabry?
Just to say my, my third grader went to that and had an incredible time, so thank you so much for doing that. And I do want to say to my lovely wife, happy anniversary. It's our anniversary today of nineteen years, just to put it on the record. Yeah, thank you, thank you.
All right. Anything else? All right. This meeting is adjourned.